I wanted to come back to the council and provide anything to evolve about. Uh what's happened since the spring forum? And so the purpose of the study session tonight is to to talk about. Um the work that has been done and where we're heading and. You know, what the next steps are going to be so that you all are at the speed on what's been going on. So first, uh, starting with the spring form which was held on May twenty ninth. Uh, the group that was in attendance there agreed that we were going to address severe weather sheltering. Uh, for the upcoming winter season and that the most likely route was going to be an I G A. Um, the group agreed to work on a longer term plan as a region to address homelessness. And that this work uh would require fine resources and funding. Uh, along with collaborating to make that work. The city and the county manager uh were dis- designated as the decision makers for each jurisdiction. And the key takeaways from the forum were that regional collaboration is essential. And that a shared commitment to um supporting uh sheltering options countywide. Uh, and also sharing um in a cost model for uh covering the cost of sheltering. Those were the outcomes and agreements from the spring forum. So, uh, let me talk a little bit about before we jump into more details about what our that is already doing. Uh, I know a lot of you have already uh heard and seen this, but just as a reminder. Um, that we do have our homelessness case managers. We have street outreach with Family Tree, One Small Step, our PD Court Team, Co- responders, the Colorado Rangers. And we do right away an encampment uh cleanup. Um, we partner with Jefferson Center uh for mental health. Um, uh, our housing navigator on the housing team, we provide vouchers. Hudson and Alex have a a program at Suburban Studios that has uh been uh successful. Um, providing funding in the past for severe weather sheltering. Uh, regional collaboration gets especially through with uh uh our city management team and then our. Our regional navigation teams, partnership with the community table and how they uh try to help on the. Um, food end of things. And then we have partnerships with uh Denver Rescue Mission, M D H I. Colorado Coalition for the Homeless and then some specific individuals. Matt Rivera in Adams County, Jamie Rye with Denver and Carrie Rinnick at Jeffco. Um, and we coordinate with all those folks and the providers.
Do we have a snapshot for the thing before the partnerships of? How much we're spending on this and what budget it's coming out of? Okay, so right away, that's the police budget and that's how much we spend every year on cleaning up right away. That's suburban studios, that's HUD grant, this is how much we spend and here's how much on, you know, so like at a snapshot, we know. How much we're spending on this?
So we have a lot of that information. Um, it's not in this presentation. Uh, but if that is something that you want information to follow upon, we can give that. The purpose of tonight's was not those details, but I'll get them. It was about the. What we're gonna do for severe weather sheltering, but yes, we can make that. Um, and then, so the city county managers have held several meetings about this. Uh, the first one was on the twelfth, so not long after the spring forum. We had a planning meeting and discussed sheltering options. Um, June twenty third, we had follow-up discussions, including the funding model. Um, July the fifteenth, we uh put together and delivered to the managers the term sheet proposal. Um, August fifth.
Sorry, what, can you explain what that is?
I will in the next slide.
Okay, fabulous, thank you.
Um, August fifth, uh, which is tonight, I'm meeting with all of you for our study session. The other cities and and the county will be doing something similar. The reason why we are so early on in this process is because. The way our workshop schedule and our business meeting schedules work, if I didn't get to you tonight, we would probably not be able to have this study session. So I am the first one and I'm early uh because we don't yet have the I G A. And so some of this, and and I'll point this out to you in next steps. Uh, because we're early on, which is really based on our schedule, you're hearing a lot of this before other city councils will. Get this information, but that'll be forthcoming for them. And then our next meeting is on August fourteenth where uh we hope to have. Um, or be close to a draft I G A for our legal teams to be under review by our city attorney's office. Uh, and then, as I said, other cities are going to be holding similar sessions or workshops uh for the presentation. Of the work that we've been doing today. Um, so options for sheltering, um currently there are no shelter options in Arvada for the coming season. Um, the Arvada overnight weather shelter team um has. Uh, a small group of dedicated individuals that have been working on trying to find sheltering options. And it has been a challenge for them. I have met with the with their leadership. We've talked about uh um several different options that they could look at exploring. And it's been very difficult for them to be able to find a shelter location. Uh, mostly they have been reaching out to the faith community and uh have been trying to find. A church, for example, that would be willing to um support uh s- uh severe weather sheltering. And that has not come to fruition. And so at this point, it does not look like. Uh, either they or we have not been able to identify a sheltering option for the coming season. And so specifically to the shelter statement, um, we have not been able to find an option for our.
I've seen Andrews, we mentioned that once, it's sitting empty at this point, one across the street down to Crest. The fire department owns it now?
Oh, yes. Uh, I don't know if they, if the overnight weather sheltering has approached that or not. I would have to follow up on that, Brad, and see. I know that one of the concerns there was that that was in the middle of the neighborhood and there were some concerns.
Every property in our bad is in the middle of the neighborhood.
Challenge for us. Um, yeah, let me go back and ask about that. I know that that has come up uh in previous conversations. And then um sheltering options agreed upon with the I G A. Uh, so the Lakewood Navigation Center, I think everybody knows that this is gonna be closed for most of the upcoming season. But when they do open, I think their objective is to get close to the end of this year. They will have the opportunity to shelter um a number of individuals. But even though they won't be available for walk-ins, they will have clients that will be coming off the street during. Uh, cold weather and so Lakewood will have some opportunity with that, but it's not gonna be. Like a walk-in shelter that we historically see with severe weather. The White Swan is a family shelter in Lakewood. Um, they will have uh likely some availability to help families. Um, the main emphasis that uh we were able to generate for options are hotel vouchers, motel vouchers. And you'll see here in a little bit that the amount of money that will be put forth for motel vouchers will be increased. To help um support that. The Westminster Mac, um, they have a zero degree activation, so they would open. Later than typically what you would see with the severe weather options, which is. Like thirty-two, below thirty-two degrees of precipitation. Um, which we're standardizing across the county so that all all shelter options will follow that format. And then.
So including the Mac, they're gonna change?
No, uh, the Mac will be a zero degree.
So why does less, if everybody else activates, why isn't it?
Because they operate using their, well, they they have their own operating uh. Agreement and they also use their city team members to operate. And so. The cost and expenses associated with opening at a higher temperature would be more costly to Westminster. Um, and then we have a non-designated, our that a nonprofit should we. Find somebody that can do severe weather sheltering, um, because we don't have something as specific as the Mac or the Lakewood. We designated our line as in our that a nonprofit, not knowing whether, for example, the Arvada overnight weather sheltering could. Come forth with a shelter.
That's a placeholder and.
It's a placeholder, yeah. So, uh, the funding structure is currently based upon population. Um, this is a slide that provides a breakdown of that. As you can see, our percent is twenty-two. And our funding amount is uh a little over four hundred and thirty-two thousand. One of the things that you would see in our breakdown is that. While our total contribution is four hundred and thirty-two, we have um. Set back a hundred thousand for in the event that we have um a local Arvada nonprofit at that placeholder. That we could provide a hundred thousand to that and then our final amount would be reduced by that hundred and thirty. Uh, that hundred thousand, so we would be at three hundred and thirty-two thousand and some change. For our contribution to financially support all of the other options um that are available in Jefferson County. So this funding model at a little over two million dollars is designed to support. Severe weather sheltering throughout the county by all of the jurisdictions contribute.
Real quick, uh, Westminster, because I know it exists on both uh county lines with Adams County having a slightly larger share of the city. I'm assuming that they're also participating in other Adams County-led programming and financially obligated over there. So they're not putting all of Westminster into that eight, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, the eight percent uh just represents what Saint Jeff is in town with the best of their of their city. By that percent population, um, they're funding toward the Adams County.
Okay.
So are the other municipalities or county being given a credit for the funding of the other resources? The way you just described the hundred.
So we are, and I believe the uh Lakewood and Westminster. Um, they're, so like the hundred thousand that I talked about there, the same reduction would occur with the other cities. But our total contribution still amount to that. So, uh, you know, what's our, to give you an idea what this means for us looking at. Um, some estimated homelessness population, I think everybody knows that there's some disagreement about how accurate. Uh, the point in time counts are. Um, in looking at ours specifically, so I put some Jeffco information in there. Um, as well as uh what we could gather for about a specific point in time. Um, in conferring with uh Hudson on our team, those numbers are probably pretty close. Where we we seem to be around three hundred uh unhoused individuals in our bad. And and I think everybody knows it's really difficult to get a really accurate count of. Exactly how many unhoused there are, just 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 because there's turnover and transition and there's some transient nature to that.
Now, let me just, maybe you can give us some color to that because there's. Zero chance that there are three hundred people sleeping outside tonight or any night of the year in our bed. I mean, zero chance. So obviously, some of these people who are who are classified as as homeless or unhoused or whatever. They're sleeping on friends' couches, they're providing themselves with a motel, they're doing something. The number that only, the only number that makes sense is how many people are sleeping out under the stars tonight or any night? Zero chance is three hundred. It's some fraction of that. Do you have any idea what the fraction of that is?
So let me ask Hudson, you were at the point in time um and have been around this data, what is your sense of that?
Yeah, it's usually about one-third are kind of in like unsheltered, some mediocre shelters. So thirty to fifty percent are in kind of some makeshift shelter outlets, sitting on the stars, and the other fifty percent are sheltered by whatever means, but. The pick count also, that's on the data board, so you can go into M D H I, look at how much percentage were sheltered, unsheltered. Um, and again, everybody has their reserves about how accurate it is.
I guess the the question is, and is. A third, so that gets down to a hundred. Are there a hundred people sleeping out under the stars in our Vata tonight? I find that, I find that so hard to believe, and particularly when we get to be wintertime. Because I don't, I see four, five. You see, I I there's no way I'm only seeing three percent of the people who are, you know, camping in public spaces or, you know, like. If there's a hundred people sleeping under the stars in our bed at night, where are they?
They're under the bridge at Lamar, they're uh under the sea dot.
I ri- I ride my bike down the Clear Creek Trail, sometimes early in the morning, sometimes at night. There's no way I see a hundred people in, I I I I just find, I find that so hard to believe. I think the numbers are are, you know, when you're talking about severe weather emergency sheltering. You're talking about the people who have no option other than they're under the stars and they might die because it gets too cold and without. Real believable data, it just becomes impossible.
You're not believing, oh, so what do you think the right number is?
I, you know, I don't know. I I I I think it's forty or fifty people is.
Based on.
You know, ba- based on my guess, like Hudson's guess or anybody else's guess, you know?
Well, except for people actually go and count to at least get some of this information.
Right, but 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 it goes back to like the point in time count, which is, which is very specious. Um, of of, you know, it's self-reported, it's uh catches people that. Aren't living in their house, but they're living in somebody's house, you know, they're staying with a friend, they're staying on somebody's couch.
Documented. Does anybody else have issues with the numbers besides John? Or does everybody else feel like it's pretty accurate?
I, well, so.
I mean, you went on a point in time.
Yeah, we had three people.
Yeah.
Right, but that was because a lot of people were being sheltered temporarily at the rising.
It was butt-ass cold that night.
They were inside the rising.
And the three that we talked to were kicked out of the rising, so they don't really.
But before Shauna cuts me off here, I I don't, I don't wanna try to argue to what the number is. I I I just, when we talk about these plans and you see, you know, multi-millions of dollars proposed to be spent. I I it seems to me that we ought to have more concrete. This, this is who we're trying to help, this is how many, this is how, this is why, these. When we base it on stuff like this, it just seems to be, we're starting in such an unclear spot, it's hard to come up with. A clear, clear policy and clear way to go. And I just wanna, I just wanna. Highlight that as we're talking about about this particular slide, because as we go forward, there's gonna be some other, you know, questions about. You know, what is it we're doing here and how, anyway, I'll 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 stop there.
Can I just say that, so when, when I was with Denver, I participated in five of these point in time counts. And when we asked, why are you unhoused tonight? It's because I want to be. So I think that that is something that we need to also take into account. There are people who don't wanna go to the shelter. Who don't wanna be housed, leave me alone, I wanna live like this. There are people that that were living, a whole community living by. The um medical examiner's office. I mean, there had to be, I, and I'm not even exaggerating, fifty people and they started their own community. Leave me alone. And so that's why um sometimes when I see these counts, my next question would be. But do they want to be unhoused? Um, I think that is, that's kind of a question that we need to ask as well.
And that's a fair point, but on some of these really cold nights, it's not really the fundamental question of the larger, do you want housing or not? It is, do you want to be out in zero degrees or not? There will be a very small number of those individuals who still say yes, absolutely. But my estimation, I look for experts here, is that my guess is that there will, that number will be de minimis enough. That we can still focus on the numbers we have, we would work with, and if those folks reject a voucher, they reject a voucher. But we can't stop the plan because of a small number. And I do know that um submission Nevada did severe weather sheltering. And uh the severe weather shelter network also did severe weather sheltering, so we have year-on-year data. Of every time in severe weather, we have about fifty to seventy-five people from Arvada who need sheltering. So I feel like we have pretty reliable numbers, not on who is outside during a point in time count, but who actually needs housing, which is your question, John. It seems like that is the data that we have available that we could plan for, right?
Yeah, so I I think to um, talk about John asking about the color of those numbers. Um, we try to look at what, what other sources of information would help us point to. How many people we think are here, so point in time is one. Um, we, we talk to the core officers about what they see, you know, because they're out there all the time. Um, we obviously talked to Hudson and Alex about that too. And then I think to your point, Shauna, that. Uh, and and I'll ask Hudson if he can speak to this, but like, like this last season, he was reporting out to me. Um, pretty much every night, severe weather was open for how many vouchers went out, how many were. Uh, housed at the rising and then if they had any information on, to Sharon's point about those that didn't want to seek sheltering. And do you were kind of roughly remember those numbers?
I was trying to pull up an exact number. Um, typically it would be between thirty-five to forty-five people. We put in Jefferson County motel vouchers, thirty-five to forty would be at the rising. And then we would have thirty rooms at suburban studios with another forty people, so.
So about a hundred.
Hundred twenty to a hundred fifty, give or take a visible, yes.
That's, that's a little quick question. The rooms at suburban studios though weren't severe weather shelter rooms, those were people who were. Working their way through the program or or whatnot. I mean, you can say, well, if they didn't have that, they would be on the street, but like that hardly counts. When that's their, that's their room for now, regardless of what the weather is, I don't think you can add those numbers and say, we need to have. That capacity for severe weather sheltering. It just doesn't seem to me like that.
By, by like HUD definition, it's paid for by, so that's what we go off is basically their definition of houses and technically they would be homeless.
So, e- and even if we take it off, we're probably, you know, ramming on. Um, and so what we try to look at are a variety of data sources to try to help us understand. What do we think the total homeless population is? And then, you know, to your question, John, how many actually in. Uh, need severe shelter. And I think pretty consistently last year, that number hovered between that ninety to a hundred.
But not three hundred.
Yeah, this is what this is describing.
I I realize it's just the pin count, but.
Yeah, what the. Okay, so on the I G A development, uh, so. The structure of that is uh beginning now, we will be meeting again um on the fourteenth to. Bring some structure uh to this so that uh we can um get something in place that we can go to our legal teams with. And start the review of the I G A. I think, as you all know, sometimes that can be a bit complicated. But we've got all these cities trying to reach an I G A, but the agreement at the spring forum was to um. You know, try to be as flexible with the multiple jurisdictions as we can to make something work. Uh, so we will be doing that. Um, the cities, like we're doing tonight, are beginning to brief their councils. And uh, we'll, I will be bringing the proposed I G A um to the council. So that you have an idea of what that is gonna look like before we would bring it to you for groupable. So that if there's things that we need to work on or work out that we can do that, so that will be coming to you here in the next month. Um, so Randy, you were asking about the term sheets. So basically what we tried to do with the term sheet is to lay out. Um, the likely terms that would be in the I G A. Um, the idea here is to start with a term sheet that basically gets uh everybody into. Uh, general agreement about what would be there. So, for example, the, all of us agree to share costs across the county. Jeffco will be the fiscal agent, um, twenty-five percent share due November first with the remainder due in January. Um, this lays out the Lakewood, Westminster, Nevada. Um, Brad, this was your question about the other jurisdictions that would pay existing. And then that would be deducted, you know, from the whole, uh, but the amount would be the same. Um, and then uh we each contribute to the pool of funding, consensus decision-making. Um, cold weather activation to be consistent across the county and to your question about the Mac. Not only are they in Westie, but they're in Adams County as well. And then motel vouchers. Um, sheltering will will likely be the highest use uh and expanded funding in order to make that work. And then um extreme weather sheltering, now this, these are the tents, the the mobile shelters. So those are temperatures of below ten degree for forty-eight hours. Um, and then no part of the pooled funding model uh will will um be used to fund that. Jeffco will take care of that. And then um I believe that Jefferson County also intends to. Identify the locations for the tents. We tried to do that within the city jurisdictions, which became. A a big challenge. And so Jeffco has been working on how to find those tent locations within the county.
Assuming worst-case scenario, we do not find a location in our Vata. Um, and we are contributing into this, what happens to severe weather night with our homeless population that Hudson and our team is trying to help?
So, uh, we will mostly rely on the voucher, the hooks and vouchers. Now, there could be. Yeah, and so we also have access to the Mac. Um, and then if there is sheltering in other places like Lakewood, for example, or. With another one of the cities happens to be able to find uh sheltering that they can use. We can also use that. Um, some of the options are gonna be really difficult, like the Echo that's up in Evergreen, you know, the transportation there. Would be very difficult and especially if you're in like a lizard condition, that's just not an option. So, um, and this is, and this is what the challenge of this is, is that there are are not a lot of options. Um, but there are uh people and groups that are working still to try to.
Well, I know you and I have talked about this, um, and I appreciate your work on this and how difficult it is to find a location. I wanna help and I've expressed that to you, so we've talked about bringing the faith community together for a meeting, so let me know how we can do that moving forward.
Yeah, it was one of the points of conversation that I had with the Arvada overnight team was, you know, bringing the. Faith leader back together again to have that conversation about providing assistance, whether it's building, sheltering. Um, or volunteers and, you know, volunteers is also a significant issue. Uh, I believe that the um Arvato and Mac weather team was looking to to actually have team staff. That understood what it took in order to really do sheltering so that there could be the proper management and oversight of that. I think their model is is trying to drive that direction, but of course, that, you know, is expensive. And but then it still comes back to, you've gotta have the place um for that. And so among some of the other discussions have been. Uh, building, uh, some of the the churches and other building locations. Uh, really center around the damage that gets caused during the overnight and the reluctance of that. Because, you know, it's costly to do that. And so is part of this uh opportunity. To create a fund that could help pay for some of that damage and I think some of that will continue to be a point of others.
So it, the potential is there for the money that's collected elaborately to be used to offset the damage or not?
It's hard to say at this point whether that's the case. We have tried to make the estimates of the cause based on historic results. Um, but for example, if our set aside for Arvada doesn't actually materialize, that's an example of where. Uh, some potential um pooling could come from for damage or or maybe from others. Um, and or do we need to, you know, consider some additional contribution to do that? So that's a, uh, that's part of the discussion that's still.
Thanks.
So if we were to come up with our own partial solution to this, that hundred thousand.
So if we were to come up with our own partial solution to this, that hundred thousand would be ours to spend. On that portion of the program as we saw fit. So it could go to a chunk of the repairs or indemnification for damages.
Yeah, we also have to realize this happened in Denver. Was when a church wanted to use their building for um for overnight sheltering, their insurance went up. Because you have people who could possibly die there.
That's probably true.
Um, the damage alone. So uh, just beware of that. That could be part of the faith community's reluctance to have. Um, something in their building.
We could look from the staff side, we could look for some solutions um in terms of coverage or potentially like. Agreements and things like that that might help.
That would be great.
A couple of years, two or three years ago, when Cornerstone was being used for sheltering, um. That's when severe weather shelter network was operating. That was their last year. There was damage um inside the church. There were, there was damage to the plumbing and. We did, this is an example of where we did step in and and help the building owners out with that. Because severe weather shelter was not able to cover those kinds of costs. And so. This is, this is what I'm sure other jurisdictions, I haven't asked them specifically, but I'm sure that they have probably also done things first.
Yeah, that's where the forty thousand that was um the city manager discretionary budget kind of came in to help.
Uh, another question, um if with the expansion of motel vouchering, because it wouldn't just be us, there's other cities wanting to make advantage of this. Are there enough motel rooms and willing motels to participate in this program?
So uh, that work is underway as we're speaking about trying to secure that. Um, and uh, it it is possible that can be the challenge.
Don, when you guys were talking about this, you know, one of the. Things if if across the county, you're gonna house a bunch of people who need severe weather housing in motels. Certain communities are gonna feel way more effect than others. You know, Nevada might feel ineffective contributing money. But places that have motels are gonna feel the effect of what happens on the day it warms up. And it doesn't seem like requiring everybody to pay the same amount of money, but yet offloading significantly more. Problems onto certain communities is is appropriate. Um, if they're all paying the same, you know, did you guys talk about that at all? Was that a subjective conversation about? You know, what are you gonna do here? Cause you know, some some people are gonna feel the effects of this in a very negative way. Profoundly and significant, and it sounds like a significant number of nights.
Yes, so uh, yes, um, that that has come up in the topic of conversation um about um. You know, like we don't have those kinds of hotels in Arvada where that would be a likely possibility, but. Wheat Ridge, for example, I'll just use them as an example, they do. And yes, they express concern about that. And they express concern about um, you know, the the policing and other resources that come about as a result of that. So the pool contribution does help some um with that, but there are additional effects as a result of.
I guess the same problem would occur in in any any facility that's gonna gather them. The day it warms up and they get all.
Right, that's church.
And we see that with the severe weather sheltering that we did have and it warmed back up and people were leaving. You know, the for that, you know, I don't know what the timeframe was, couple of hours, um, uh, you know, definitely. Um, the there was an increasing unhoused population right at that area.
I can tell you from my experience, it's not a couple of hours, couple days. But yeah, but it's it's impacts.
From the hotels down there.
Yeah, it's a, you know, so the problem is they round them all up from all over the county and concentrate them, put them in one spot. And the day that it warms up, what, you know, they don't take them back where they found them. They just say, okay. You're out, here's the front door. And so all of a sudden you have a large number of people all in one spot. And they don't disperse in a couple of hours. They disperse in a couple of days. And then a few days later, they all get brought back and you repeat the cycle over and over and over again. Some people are pretty profoundly affected by that. You know, much more than the people, the places where folks are getting taken away from or see a positive effect, but some people take a negative. See a negative effect and there ought to be some, I would think in this collaborative model, there ought to be some kind of. Compensation for that or some kind of uh uh operational sensitivity to that, like, you know. List, where did, where did we get this person from? Now where do we take them back to, you know, so that they don't get. Um, you know, when it warms up, they don't just all come in one spot.
Yeah, and and I made a note about that and I'll come back to the group and have that discussion. Within all and um get a better feel for where some of the cities that are really impacted, which I think are probably gonna be Lakewood and.
So uh, yes, you were reading my mind because I had that as a note here too. It was like we. Take people from Jefferson County to the MAC, which is in Westminster and Adams County, what does that look like? And something that really very much concerns me because you, if you look over the fence at Denver, this is what has happened. People have been attacked when you, when people are concentrated in one place. Um, are we checking backpacks? Are, what are we allowing into the shelter? Because if we're allowing needles, especially. Um, in some of these situations, needles get flushed. That is a nightmare to try to get out of plumbing. And it costs thousands of dollars. Um, uh, just having somebody. In in Denver, they had somebody attacked in one of the shelters by one of the providers. So are we ba- are we doing any background checks for the people who are volunteering? Who are we asking to watch out for these uh, the the unhoused folks? This is why a lot of, uh, one in particular, the vineyard said that they are giving up on that because. Of they don't know who's watching who. And they don't know, they don't wanna send their volunteers into something where it's not necessarily a controlled space. Do we have a safety plan? Do we have um uh Sharps containers? Do we have uh a way to determine if somebody's bringing in a weapon? That all those things are are concerning to me and when you're standing something up because. In twenty-four hours, it's gonna be less than X number of degrees. How are we planning for that?
So um, I I think the best answer I can give is that that's beyond the scope of what we're doing here. The the purpose of this work was to bring the IGA together to look at a regional funding mechanism to be able to. Um, have providers that would be responsible for the operational details, which. We have not dived into that on this work because this work was related to uh trying to find the funding model to. Um, provide the opportunity for this to happen. So your questions are good ones and uh certainly. Once the locations are identified where that would happen, those operating details are something that the providers would. Be working on and working out, but we have not approached that in this.
Okay, I just, I just want to share with council that if somebody were injured, if a volunteer were attacked. Or another her, um unhoused person attacks another unharmed person or harms them. One of the the uh. People named in the, in the uh lawsuit is going to be the city of Arvada. And so I just want you to be clear on that in terms of what we're doing. And when we come together with the term sheet, uh, that's just something that I would. I know it's not part of this, Dawn, I'm sorry, I don't mean to hijack the conversation, but that greatly concerns me. And so far, we've been really lucky.
I I have saved all my stuff to the end.
Uh, so one point, um, so next steps, uh, we meet again on August fourteenth. And um, I'll bring up, you know, some of the questions that I heard here today. The final draft will be ready soon for all of our various cities' legal teams to be taken a look at. And the goal is to have the IGA presented to council before October one. So that uh, we would be in a position to be ready to move this forward before severe weather hits. So that's the update of the work we've been doing and where we're.
Thank you very much.
Well, that was just one slide. You said a couple.
I thought a couple. This is the last one.
Okay, the credits came early. So, yeah, so a couple of things. One, uh, I'll start off saying I appreciate finding a solution. Um, because I don't wanna own this. I'm not saying, I don't wanna say it's a, it is a problem, but I don't wanna operate it and and own it at that level. I I truly believe in supporting nonprofits and providers with the financial support. Because they're the experts and we're not when you deal with this type of a situation. So um, I appreciate you going down this this path. I understand the concern of, you know, honestly, four hundred thousand some change or three hundred and some change or whatever it ends up being. Is I think minor, especially if we have a bad winter. I suspect this winter could be a a good, not as, it'd be probably. Not as, well, good and bad, it depends if you're skiing or or homeless, I guess, at the end of the day, but. Or, yeah, it it won't be as mild as last year. So I think there'll be a little bit more of those nights that hit below. I think, I think the.
We had thirty, we had last year.
Yeah, but they were, I was like, they were a little vampire. My meteorologist said that we were above thirty-two degrees. So these reported twenty-six days. There was only about thirty minutes that we got there. Granted, that's already a little different, but. Um, you have to look at consecutive days too. So um. I I I appreciate that we'd be consistent across the whole county with the the, you know, being humid in thirty-two or below or whatever you wanna use. Or or precipitations in the forecast of thirty-two. Um, so I appreciate that. You know, the amount of people going to it, I I believe the one-third is probably the ride out of the point in time. The point in time is just saying homeless in general. It's not. It could be all the categories that John was mentioning, the south, the surfing, already in a voucher, living on the street, living in the park. You know, I I I I have walked to Clear Creek because obviously what I do in my day job and I'm, I have a lot of issues between. Tipling and all the way out to I twenty-five. And granted, some of that's in Denver and and Adams County. There is a bunch that live all in the Little Fork that we're trying to cut down because our environmental teams won't let us cut down the trees, even though they're all living in there. And it's causing uh water impacts, but you know, there there is, we know for a fact that there is between Sheridan and Wadsworth. There's about thirty-five, forty people that live in in the right of way. They're not there during the day, which is interesting.
They go to work.
Yeah, they or do something. So I do believe the one-third seems right, at least my gut. And the best data we have, and I just wanna highlight. Is the point in time and whatever data you get, it's not science perfect, but it's the only data that's close to something. Um, so that's the best way we can approach it. At least it's not just that, what it's in the air, it's at least something. Even if it's seventy, thirty or eighty, twenty accuracy, it's close enough uh to try to address the few folks. Um, because I believe it does probably cover some folks that probably live in their cars, I'm assuming as well and. Uh, they can't, they may not have the money to to run their car and keep warm and and that causes another issue. Is if that tailpipe gets clogged, then they could die. Um, so. Um, I think spending four hundred and some thousand is is as a. An asserted effort by the entire county and all the communities is a great solution, but it's the city and county manager to to figure out and. I like where the direction's going. I know there's details that Sharon's talking about. I think those are operational and well down on the provider. But there are worries that we have to be considered of and our IGA amongst the communities probably don't get to that level, but. If the county's gonna be the one handing out money or however that flow of money goes, maybe those are some consideration of. You know, the welfare of the guests or the people coming in just. Those are some of maybe those agreements. I'm assuming the county would have agreements with the providers. And that would be up for the county to to do. So maybe we can just stress those. Security and and welfare concerns and let the county run with those with their providers and. We don't need to be in the middle of that. So I'm I'm supportive of the direction of going. I I don't, I don't wanna own this. I I know that sounds maybe harsh, but we as a city. I don't wanna own it. I rather, you've always heard me, I rather give the money and have professional people figure it out all the way down and. And if it's Hudson, he has some great ideas, you know, if he has the ideas. A half million dollars to to help this, I mean.
Yes, I do.
But but you have creative ideas and I've heard you speak many times and I and I appreciate the creativity and I think. Just give it to the right people to make that decision. We here should not be engineering it. Local writing and tactical guidance on any of this. We should know is this the strategic direction as policyal um owners? Yes, it's something we need to address and um, I appreciate it. So I'll get off my podium and. I thank you, thank you Bob for that. I I totally agree. I think this is a huge step in the right direction. We've been talking about getting the county more engaged and taking some ownership. I think we're seeing them do more of that this time. And to have this collaboration amongst the county and all the municipalities and find a more sustainable funding source. So that we're not every year going, what are we gonna do about severe weather? How are we little Arvada gonna handle this? We've got this collaborative effort now. That I think um can really make a difference and it, you know, can really help um move us forward into finding some solutions. Um, and I appreciate all the work that you, Don, and Hudson and the whole team have been doing on this. Um, and I'll just echo what I said before, I'm I'm really committed to finding a se- a shelter that we can use this time. Um, it's not an old town um in Arvada that's gonna make sense for us as a community. And so I wanna keep working on that.
And thank you. And to echo your comments, the county team is really, they've been at the table every every time. And have been actively engaged in helping all the city teams work through it. So we've appreciated their.
Um, yeah, I agree with Randy and Bob. I think this is a good collaborative solution and I like the model that we're going towards. Especially as a benefit is, um, you know, we are working on the rising, finding another location as well and severe weather sheltering. Well, this is like the price for severe weather sheltering to not take place in Old Town and for them to have no reason to take people because we have a system. We have something in place. We are working with the county instead of pet work. Oh, my gosh, it's cold. What are we doing tonight? Um, my question is, if the services aren't used for some reason, it's a great winter or a bad winter, no snow, not cold. Or if we don't have an average of a hundred people like we have in the past that need vouchers, like. For some reason, Arvada really only does have ten people um every night that need a voucher. Do we get a rebate?
So we'll have that detail nailed down by the time the IGA is complete. Because it 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 is a question that the rest of us have as well. So we will, we will have that figured out. So that it'll be clear about what happens with that.
Okay, I would ask for it to roll.
Yeah.
Just because that is better for us. I mean, long, I think if there's a mild year like Sean is saying. It it helps us the next year to not hit as much and just let it keep going. I I do have one last question. I forgot to ask them. You know, this is great for folks out there, but there are still that people on the edge that I always always advocate for. Uh, uh, the invisible homeless, the ones that are about to lose their house and could end up in this severe weather sheltering. I just wanna make sure, I don't, we don't need to solve it here, but we, I really, really want us to keep um supporting. Um, the team on the housing vouchers and rental assistance and stuff. I I. I just, if we can keep a pulse on that, because the last thing you need is to continue to let the floodgates flow down. When we could try to turn the nozzle down a little bit and keep somebody in, just they just need this much to stay from, you know, from being on the street. Or staying in a warm house. Cause it's just gonna add to the problem. We can't close that off. So just keep a pulse on it. And help us stay tuned to that.
Yeah, there is a concern, of course, about um waiting lists and sources that we've cut off for housing and. And that sort of thing, but our housing team is keeping a close eye on.
And and what do I, and what do we need to do? Because we're gonna pay one way or the other. We're either gonna pay this way or pay with what's happening out in the community, or we're gonna pay to keep them in their house. And I think we need to find the. Their most proactive way to.
Yeah, to that point, Bob, I'll say that the majority of the county funding is to keep people in their homes. Um, I was surprised to find that out. Um I was surprised to find that out at the spring forum when the county presented, like here's how much we just kinda like what you did, here's everything Arvada's doing. The county was like, and I think like sixty, seventy percent of their budget is slated towards.
Section eight housing vouchers.
Keeping people housed and rental assistance and 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 those and those kinds of things. Um and I feel hopeful that if we all cities can be working on accounting and severe weather shelter. Then what else can we be working on for more systemic approach? And so I think that this is like the first step for a collaboration, but what can we do about this immediate need of severe weather shelter? How much can we collaborate, can we collaborate? I think those are all questions that this should be successful and then we can keep on holistically addressing it.
Yeah, that brings a good, just, sorry, but does that change? Um their section eight is different than ours, it just moves around, just like ours moves around within the county, right?
I think so, yeah, I would wanna check with Carrie to be better about that.
A couple of things. Couple of questions, Don, what would be the source of our contr- source of the funds of our contribution? Straight out of the general fund?
So probably, and uh um it it's a conversation that I've started with the finance team. About how do we, how do we carve out this piece in order to make that happen? Um we will probably know the details about how we would fund this, once we know if this is gonna be our account.
So if we do proceed with this, what are we likely to not do so that we can do this? Like where, we spend all the money, what are we gonna stop doing so that we can do this?
Yeah, so that too is part of the discussion that uh once we identify what that funding is, I'll be able to tell you that.
Okay, th- thank you, let me, let me ask a couple more questions, you can fill in after that. But um tell me about the discussions about standardizing this, this wind severe weather sheltering happens. So if I were creating an industry, I would create an industry that gets utilized as often as possible. Um if I, you know, if I were trying to save money, I would try to have it used less. How how did, how is this, whatever the, is this gonna be decided about when we're gonna start handing out motel vouchers?
So the um thirty-two degree, the freezing point um is uh the the line of demarcation. So if there's not moisture associated with the thirty-two degrees. Then the the shelter would not open, but if there is moisture that's associated with it. Um you know, that amplifies the cold weather. And so that that is where they made that line, was at the freezing. Um do you have other details about how that decision is made, Hudson?
Yeah, what they do is they pick two specific points. Um in between in the county for points and saying at that degree level at that specific moment is the thirty-two degrees. So they weren't like, hey, if my phone says thirty-one, are we activating versus golden? So we pick two points and then we make it.
Yeah, I'm I'm not asking about the technical way of how you're gonna do it, but the the policy question of 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 why. And so if it's gonna be thirty-one degrees and a ten percent chance of participation, do we open the severe weather shelters?
Oh, it 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 has to include, my understanding is that it includes temperature and that there's actual precipitation.
So actively participate precipitation when the decision is made to to open it. And then there's some other temperature at which whether whether it's whether it's raining or it's snowing or not, you're gonna open it anyway, just based on cold only.
So uh I, the, so the cold, the severe cold happens at uh ten. Ten degrees where where you get into the tents, but so if there is uh, I gotta think about how this is written. If there is thirty-two degrees and and moisture, it gets activated. Uh if it's above thirty-two and you know, whether moisture or not, they don't um. I don't remember the temperature without moisture, uh sorry, I don't recall that.
Well, and the person, the decision is the emergency manager of the county. And their rule is loss of limb or life, that's what they're making the decision on.
Their their rule is gonna be thirty-two precipitation or some other temperature.
Specifically like when the emergency rooms start filling up because people are starting.
So you're saying the the emergency manager of the county decided what the, what the, what the policy of this.
Forum, he was the one talking about like, yeah, this is when I set up emergency shelters. And it's at the loss of life or limb due to the the temperature.
And the evidence was the E R is filling up.
I, yeah.
So let me, so so let me just make a comment then. Um I I think this is dangerous ground for the city to be going down. I mean, this is a city taking on another human services function, which we have no financial setup to do that. Um I think also, this is, I mean, if if there's such a thing, this is generous. Uh cold weather sheltering in in policies and stuff, here's, here's my concerns. Cold weather sheltering ought to be sheltering of last resort, not first choice. And so I wouldn't open cold weather sheltering unless all the other shelter spaces were full. That's my understanding, that within the region, which includes Denver, we're not talking about just Arvada or even just the county. But within the region, there's shelter beds that go open every night. There's all, there's, you know, I don't know how many, the professionals could tell you that. But but you know, if this, if this could become the sheltering of choice, not the chel- sheltering of last resort. And so if we as a city are gonna participate financially and set up and operate and run and do all these different things. It it should be shelter of last resort, it should be exactly what it's called, severe weather, it should be loss of light, life or limb. Not just because I like a motel room a lot better than I like a a a, you know, common shelter that's available somewhere else. So I'm not gonna go there, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go here. So I I think that's a, I think that's a big uh a big oversight, I would, I would like to see something like that in here. The other thing is um I I would be a little bit critical of, and you know, maybe, maybe an emergency manager of a county. Has some knowledge that I wouldn't have, but I would be very careful and critical of the mission creep. Of just making, you know, severe weather sheltering available every night between October first and April first or something like that. Because uh if you write the rules generously enough, that's what you end up. Um and then it doesn't cost us four hundred thousand dollars, it can cost us one point four million. But you know, what it, what whatever, whatever that is, and it's kinda this slippery slope into um, you know, a a new way of doing it. Meanwhile, there may be shelter capacity within the region that gets unused. Because again, a a an individual motel room's a heck of a lot more fun than a than a dormitory type type of a, type of a shelter arrangement. Um the 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 last thing I would say is is that if we're gonna go down this route. Where we're gonna spend significant city funds on this. My um I would wish us to ensure that the rising doesn't decide to just do it, like they did last year. Now, they didn't ask for permission or anything, there's nothing that would stop them from just doing it again. And creates the problems we have in Old Town, and we can have discussions about, hey, if we're doing this, you're not gonna, right? And then one night, they might just decide to do it, I don't know what we plan to do, what our plan would be if that happens. Um you know, a physical plan to stop that, to make sure that doesn't happen. Uh or, you know, do we engage them and say, look, we want you to do this, but you gotta do it somewhere else. And w- we'll pay you part of what we're gonna pay here to 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 bring it on board and have some control over it. But if we contribute hundreds of thousands of dollars to the county to do this. And then the rising still hosts fifty people a night, cause they're easy and you can leave and smoke or drink or do drugs and come back. And you can leave and come and leave and come, like was happening last year. And if the, you know, there's only one ninety-year-old out there to supervise the whole overnight shelter, like happened a bunch last year. And you know, things like that, the 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 customers may very well select that from their market of options. Um and we will have accomplished nothing with large expenditures for the businesses and residents and visitors to Old Town. And I, you know, I would, I would think if we're gonna go spend a significant amount of money like this, money that we're gonna have to stop doing something else to. Provide this money, money that could be used for other purposes, it's that's uh, you know, uh opportunities lost. We ought to at least ensure that we cure that situation and make sure that we do it with more than just a. Yeah, okay, sure, kind of, kind of agreement, because those agreements haven't been very durable in the past. Um so.
Uh but just to, just to clarify, did find the detail on the weather. So it is thirty-two or lower with the accumulation of precipitation or snow greater than one inch. Or twenty degrees Fahrenheit or lower with or without precipitation, so that that that's the.
Um so the couple of questions I have, it um will there be a reporting component? And outreach and education, and the reason I ask that is somehow we have to socialize spending. Four hundred plus, almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the voters, the taxpayers. We have to tell them what it's being used for, how it's being used, and then presenting statistics every year. We can't just start something and say, ding, we're gonna do this, cause we've tried that already and it backfired on us. So we definitely need some outreach and education to socialize it and the reporting to tell people where their money is going.
Yeah, I think what you did in the Arvada report with the latest edition, with the reporting out on the suburban studios of saying like, for every ten thousand dollars we spend on a person. We save the city forty-five to fifty-five thousand dollars, because we're not clearing them out of rightaways, we're not sending them to jail. We're not sending them to the emergency room, I think that kind of, like Sharon, I think that's a great point. And having that kind of report again on this uh severe weather shelter would be great. So we can like earmark some space in, I don't know, April, May, with that report out.
And just outreach and education, we need to tell people that we're spending this extra four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on. Cause we didn't do that before.
A couple of things, so I agree with Sean, I thought Randy, I like the approach, I think we're heading in the right direction. Um I agree, I would love it if nights can roll over, uh that's gonna roll over for a mild winter. But I do, like, even if we reduce something at spending, I'd like a little bit of a cushion, hopefully to build if we have a mild winter, just in case we get a severe winter. Because for every mild, there will be a severe, so we gotta plan ahead for that too, we don't wanna get shocked in the in the bad years. And then the same with um, cause it's right, this is hard, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund, most likely. I know there's potentially other options, but we feasibly could have some revenue coming in for previously expended assets. I don't know if those can be earmarked, um or portions of them could be earmarked to have funds, at least for some of the foreseeable future. So we have a better grapple on what it, grapple on what it is, so.
Well, and that's also why I want that funding snapshot of where Arvada is already spending money. Because hopefully the county has the resources to get some folks into homes, you know, so. Like I would like to see if we put more money into the county, which has more resources and a better network. Does that lower our costs elsewhere, because we're not having as much P D time, we're not having as much right away clean out, we're not. You know, the the, just different ways, I mean, the thing is, is the housing market is not great and the economy's not great. So I don't think our expenditures are gonna go down anywhere on this issue, cause it really seems like the worse the economy is, just the less people are housed.
And uh I'll can, I'll agree with John's point, it is, cause we've discussed this before too. It is very hard in the neighborhoods when folks are released around those motels. So if there's any way for us to, you know, if we're transporting them there, if there's a way, you know.
Get them back.
Get them back, and obviously not everyone will probably agree to that. But a large majority may want to go back to where they were already felt comfortable. So if we can help take folks back to where they are comfortable, that would probably alleviate some of the stress on the surrounding areas, which would be appropriate.
And you know, one thing to think about if we're gonna do transport like that is that when a van shows up. With eight or ten or twelve people and drops them off in the whole town, you know, that's gonna raise questions. And so to your point about, we're gonna have to communicate what the program is and about. So that there's not some devices, it's gonna be important, so.
Uh can I operate, I mean, not not try to get into solutioning, but maybe this fund can help fund overtime for law enforcement to be around these these areas. You know, sheriffs, I mean, sometimes if you offer overtime opportunities and fund it out of something else, you know, maybe you can use these funds for that as well.
I had a hard time getting cops to attend events and overtime, because they're already in overtime. So to try to, yeah, to try to do stuff at the Elks, they just don't even show up. Because there's um no one to work it, nobody wants to work it, they're all burned out.
Definitely, but have a look at the options, like we do at the Rangers.
The Rangers, yeah.
And two other things, one, um the dashboarding is great to measure what success is, I think success would be shown. You already, like Shauna said, all these expenditures are already happening. If this additional expense has moved those needles in the positive direction, then we know that there must have been the success in that. That uh ingredient in the pie, right, there you go. But but I would also add, so maybe the county can look for a dashboarding, or we can on ours to show our investment and return on that investment. The other thing is, is this is only an annual, right?
Yes.
So that we should always try to fine tune the process and the requirements. And just really stress on the county that they need to have some of these concerns addressed through their agreements with the providers. And we're gonna rely on them to do that, and then their openness to readjust the program every year. Cause it, what we think is good today might not be good tomorrow, right, so.
Yeah, I suspect that we'll have less.
Now, we have our experts at that table when they talk about adjusting this system.
Yeah.
Of the process. Yeah, I wanted to add with the fear of when they do exit, this past year, we learned that pretty quick as well with me and Alex. And so what we did to mitigate that was like, hey, there's gonna be another storm in Colorado, we don't know where that's gonna be. If you don't play nice with us here, you will lose this opportunity going forward. Um and a lot of clients did like, they understood that, and so when they messed up, it was like, hey, this was the conversation we had. They're like, yep, I get it, and then we would find alternative, like motel vouchering options, or we've shown other sheltering options elsewhere for them. But we would say, you can't go into the Jefferson County motel vouchers at that time. Um and also, when it did warm up, I tried to show up um and offer bus passes um as much as I could. So that they could go where they desired, uh and a lot of them appreciated that as well. Uh and then the rapport with the motel managers, we tried to build that rapport, say, hey, call us before you call police or anything like that. We'd love to jump in, cause we have the rapport with this client, um hey, we're working on this, man, let me just talk to him. So um those are what we learned this past year that we'll look to engage in the upcoming years as well.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other thoughts, questions, comments? All right, thank you very much.